Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending the Saint Tammy Parish School Board's special meeting for February 2nd, 2015. Row call, please, Ms. Randolph.
Mr. Louie.
Here.
Mr. Henigan.
Here.
Mrs. Heintz.
Here.
Mr. Durman.
Here.
Mr. Harold.
Here.
Mr. Nation.
Here.
Mr. Jeter.
Here.
Mrs. Sealy.
Here.
Mrs. Drucker.
Here.
Mr. Bettencourt.
Here.
Mr. Womack.
Here.
Mrs. Mullitt.
Present.
Mr. Alfred.
Here.
Mrs. Bellisario.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand, everyone, for the invocation and pledge led by Mr. Nation.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon this school board the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose we may faithfully serve and promote the well-being of the children of this parish and support their parents in all that we do. These things we pray in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first off, we have public comments for three minutes, and Ms. Lee Barryos wants to speak, please.
Lee Barryos, retired teacher. Tonight, I'm gonna try in three minutes to offer up for you some information that I could take two hours to do, but I'm gonna make this short. This is in reference to just one of the problems presented by the PARC testing, and that's accessibility. Why it is a problem for students who do take the test, and why it's a major concern and justification for parents who choose to refuse to allow their children to take the test. Accessibility is a term tied into civil rights. Public schools are required to make all services accessible to all students. It doesn't require students to take advantage of that access. Accessibility goes beyond just offering the same service for every child. It mandates that children with special needs, for instance, require additional services in order to ensure accessibility. John White is misrepresenting accessibility requirements when he implies that federal law requires all students to take the PARC test. Nowhere in federal or state policy or law does it say that all students must take the test. It has to be accessible to all students. The test has to be made accessible to prevent schools from not testing low-performing students, which we know from reports in the past that some charters have attempted to do or have done. This is one of the unintended consequences of applying high stakes for teacher evaluations and school performance scores using this test. One of the reasons parents are considering refusing the test is also an accessibility issue. And that specifically pertains to state textbook adoption law, Title 28. It requires the state, the state, to review and adopt for recommendation a selection of textbooks and instructional materials in a public process outlined in law. John White did not do that. He broke the law. He initially told districts they could write their own curriculum and choose their own textbooks, and also recommended that no one rush into that process, if you remember. In the meantime, he convened his own committee of 22 teacher leaders who, after checking the state website for teacher qualifications, I found were not qualified for this particular purpose, and came up with his Tier 1, Tier 2, and 3 selections with only one math and one ELA selection recommended. At this point, districts were desperate to provide curriculum materials, so many jumped in and used Eureka and Core Knowledge through Engage New York. As a result, students have not had the mandated accessibility to curriculum-aligned textbooks and instructional materials as outlined in law, and I sent you all excerpts and the link to that law. I would suggest that if the state follows through with the PARC test and additionally uses the test to calculate school performance scores, which is the threat that they're holding over parents, that schools will get a zero for every student that opts out, that they will be in violation of the law. A more sentence. If this district requires students to take the test, it will be in violation of state law, Title 28. This should be sufficient justification for not only accepting parental opt-out, but for opting the district out itself from administering this test. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Barryos. Next, on the agenda items, we have the declaration of a vacancy for the position of Saint Tammy Parish School Board member, District 12. I need a motion to declare that vacancy, please. So moved? Second?
Second.
Sharon, thank you. All right. Any comments by board members? Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Second, we have the issuance of the proclamation authorizing a special election to fill this vacancy in accordance with the provisions of Louisiana Revised Statute 18:402, Louisiana Revised Statute 18:583, and Louisiana Revised Statute 18:602. We need a motion now to issue that proclamation.
I'll take that motion.
Okay. Second, by Mr. Durman. Okay, thank you, Ms. Mullitt. Any comments from the board? Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. To have the remaining members of the Saint Tammy Parish School Board appoint a person who meets the qualifications of the office to fill the vacancy in School Board, District 12. We have two candidates there that have applied and eligible for this position. First, we'd like to have them speak, Ms. Christie and Boudreaux.
Good evening, Mr. Lou, school board members, and Mr. Fols. My name is Christie Boudreaux, and I'm a lifelong resident of Slidell and have resided in District 12 since 1997. I began my high school career at Salmon in August of 2005. We all know what happened at that time. Salmon was destroyed, we went on to Platoon at North Shore High, and then we moved to Saint Tammany Jr. From a sophomore through senior years, we were back on our campus in a FEMA school. The demographic, population, and students changed following Katrina in our district. Despite all these adversities, I managed to graduate with high honors and was ranked number 7th in my graduating class. My Saint Tammany Parish Public School education contributed to my success at the University of Southern Mississippi, where I also graduated with honors. You may be looking at me, you may be thinking that I'm not mature enough to handle this position because I'm young, but I am an adult. While I may be a young adult, I feel as though I can bring a lot to the table to serve Saint Tammany Parish Public Schools. Having graduated from high school just six years ago, I'm familiar with the challenges that students in our district face. If I'm given the opportunity, I will work with the board to empower our teachers in making curriculum decisions that are in best interest of our students. Our teachers have shown great resiliency during the many policy and curriculum changes over the last few years. While we know policy and curriculum will continue to change, Saint Tammany Parish Public Schools need to be at the forefront of these changes in order to ensure that our students receive the best education. I feel that our public schools are under attack by our federal government and state mandates, such as Common Core and PARC testing. I have kept up to date by reading newspapers, articles on the internet, and I believe that Common Core is by no means a proven method. I recently saw a social media post that Governor Gendel is now allowing parents to have the option to opt out of PARC testing, which has the potential to hurt schools, districts, and teachers in our state's accountability system. This could cause Saint Tammany Parish Public Schools to have much lower performance score. It is my understanding that Saint Tammany Parish Public Schools does not have any schools under a C at this time. In closing, my parents raised me and my siblings to be self-supporting, independent individuals. My entire life, I've watched my mother dedicate herself to the community, more importantly, the children of our community. She passed down the same passion to me to take on this public service role for all children and their education. All children deserve a good quality education. Like the Saint Tammany Parish School Board's statements of belief says, "Saint Tammany Parish Public Schools is a good school system, and we must strive to be a great school system." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Richard Hershey, Jr.
I'd like to thank, excuse me, I'd like to thank all the board members and the superintendent for allowing me to speak tonight. I've been a resident of Slidell for the majority of my life and lived in Saint Tammany Parish all of my life. Lori and I, my wife, we have seven children, four graduated from Salmon, one now teaches at Salmon. We have two that are presently going to Salmon and one at Saint Tammany. I've had a little experience serving on boards. I have a little experience with millages, rollbacks, roll forward, process, excuse me, I've lost the train of thought, about the process, about passing ordinances and things of that nature. Not the exact same things that y'all do, but I do have a similar experience of procedural process. I liked living in Slidell, I love the students there, the faculty members at all the schools. I know a lot of people that live there, and I have my kids there and my relatives that go to school there, and I'm very much interested in getting this job. Thank you very much. I told you I'd keep it short and sweet, and that's all. The rest of the stuff should be on my resume. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from any board members? Will we get going? Mr. Womack?
Ms. Hershey, Ms. Boudreaux. Do you intend on either of you serving strictly the interim period, or do you intend on running in a special election?
Go ahead.
I would intend on running in the special election after the interim period is up.
I also would run.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Same question, okay. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Y'all can have a seat, please.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll be looking for nominations for those two applicants there before we vote. We have a nomination. Mr. Womack.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Hershey.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Henigan.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Christie Boudreaux.
All right, sir. Good, we have one nomination there for both, and we'll now take our vote. All those for Mr. Richard Hershey, please raise your hand. Mr. Alfred, Mr. Womack, Ms. Drucker, Ms. Sealy, Mr. Jeter, Mr. Harold, Ms. Heintz. All right, thank you. Those for Ms. Boudreaux. Mr. Henigan, Mr. Durman, Mr. Nation, Mr. Bettencourt, Ms. Mullitt, Ms. Bellisario. Seven, six? Who's?
No. Seven, six.
Okay, seven, six. Mr. Hershey has been nominated for that position. Thank you for applying, Ms. Boudreaux. Excellent speech you gave us, and we appreciate that very much. All right, thank you. Okay, next is the discussion of the Bessie action regarding PARC testing. Yes, sir.
I guess I'm confused. Do we have the swearing-in right now as well?
Oh, we're gonna do that at the moment? Oh, okay. I'm sorry, didn't have that written down, Mr. Durman.
I didn't know the process either. I was just asking. I wasn't confirming anything.
Usually, I already have that written down for me. Ahead of time, they forgot that. I forget all that kind of stuff. Mr. Pittman?
He wants to say yes.
Yes, yes, sir.
I do believe I need a letter from the state. I forget what, for filling a vacancy, it has to be, y'all have to mail a letter and it comes in from the state?
Right.
And it comes in, and then we can do swearing-in.
We already have an open office.
Oh, y'all do?
And ready, and we've submitted and sent, you're gonna sign it, and we're gonna send it off.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Okay, Ms. Pittman?
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Richard Hershey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and the laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As member.
As member.
Saint Tammany Parish.
Of Saint Tammany Parish School Board.
District 12.
District 12.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's like Hotel California.
Mr. Jeter, you have a comment?
To Ms. Christie, I just want to say thank you. I think it's very important that we have younger people that are involved in the education of our children and being concerned. I do want to say thank you very much. Continue to do what you're doing. Public education is very important, and we appreciate the fact that you came here.
Thank you, Ms. Christie.
Okay, I think we finished that part there. All right, super. All right. Discussion of the Bessie action regarding PARC testing. In your package, you have the letter there that was written, and for all of us to look at and make a decision on signing that, to send to Bessie to, obviously, our objections to the PARC testing and such, and you also have a resolution which we put together for you, for you to read over on that also, and we have choices to which one of those there that we would like to send in to Bessie with our... Mr. Durman.
Thank you, Ms. Lou. And that was kind of my question, if we were gonna do the letter and the resolution, or just one of the other? Or if the resolution was more directed to maybe the legislature and other political bodies, and that the letter was just basically directed to Bessie and the superintendent? So I didn't...
Well, that is correct, the way you said that. The letter is more directed at the Bessie members themselves with all of us signing, and the resolution there, it did include us, you know, sending out some, a copy of that to some of the officials, such as obviously John White, as well as the Bessie members.
So in essence, both could be enacted, you know, tonight, as far as depending on the board's discretion?
I mean, we could do both. Yes, sir, I believe so.
And they kind of have a difference of functionality?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mullitt.
I believe that both the letter to Bessie and the resolution to Bessie and our legislators are both vital, and they're both similar, but they're both sending a very powerful message, and I would support that we do both, because we have had, in the past week, we've had requests for board members and superintendents throughout the state to write letters, and now that we are seeing that there has been another parish that's written a resolution, I know Saint Tammany has always been proud to say that we are one of the leaders in this state, and I think a resolution is also in order.
Ms. Bellisario.
I agree with Ms. Mullitt, because it says we hereby request that Bessie hold a special meeting, therefore it should go to Bessie. Thank you.
Mr. Bettencourt.
Thank you, Mr. Lou. I thought yesterday or this morning that I either read or heard that Mr. Roma had declined the other four Bessie members, you know, that were calling for a special meeting. Does that change this in any way, or do we still want to go forward and ask for a meeting, that they hold a meeting, even though he's already basically said no?
I believe everyone, I believe most of the parishes are considering, as well as SBA, of sending this out, no matter what Roma says at the time, at least we're all gonna be on record opposing that.
I believe that was addressed.
Okay. Anyone else on this side? Ms. Heintz?
My concern with just sending a resolution is that when you send a resolution to Bessie, it doesn't get entered into their minutes until they hold a meeting. So if we don't ask them to hold a meeting, then sending the resolution after the fact doesn't, you know, make sense. So I think it's important to send the letter. I also believe that the letter should be sent to the Bessie members at their place of business, not to the Bessie office, to be given to them at their next meeting time. I'd like the Bessie members to have this meeting, I mean, this letter in hand. I feel like it's a much more personal contact, so I feel like the letter is very important.
Mr. Harold.
Yes, I'd like to move that we send both of these to the parties indicated.
All right, we have a motion, Mr. Harold, second, Mr. Bettencourt. Comments from the board? Mr. Durman? Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, thank you, I'm sorry.
I just wanted a point of clarification here. It is my understanding that the next Bessie board meeting will be in March, and it is quite a distance in time for what we are faced with now, and we are up against time. And with that, I don't know that they're going to even acknowledge the fact that we are, that they will hold a special meeting, because four of the board members are very firm in that they want this special meeting, but however, the president turned it down, and I believe the rest of them were to follow. But this is the information that I got through email, and it is disappointing that they're not having this meeting. And so I don't know what's gonna happen in the meantime, but that was the last I heard, and it was, I believe, yesterday.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Durman.
Mr. Fols, you want...
No, I just want to share some of our conversation with the superintendent. So I think some of the intent of this letter would be to get some of the Bessie board members that in the past have said they're not in favor of, to maybe sway them into seeing the need to have this meeting. So I don't think we need to just say, okay, there's only four, let's give up. Maybe this letter from this board can convince some of those others that indeed a meeting is necessary, and that if the numbers grow, then maybe Mr. Roma will change his mind. Absolutely, thank you. Mr. Bettencourt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mic's still up, I'm sorry.
I was just being polite there a couple of times.
You worded that, go ahead.
All right, when we're talking about the letter and the resolution, are we gonna vote on them separately and discuss the content separately, or are we gonna... Because right now, we have a motion on the floor, but for both. But I'm just wondering how we're gonna handle the vote and then the discussion.
Mr. Pittman, you wanna help us out there?
The motion on the floor is for both of them.
Okay, so discussion is gonna take place, and then the resolution part of it is what I'm kind of addressing. I know we talk about the testing and the school performance scores, but we don't address teacher evaluation component in how this PARC testing could impact that as well, and I think that as a board, we'd be remiss if we didn't address that in this resolution for our employees and what that may mean to our teachers. So I would just enter that as a thought of conversation for the board members to see how that may be inserted into this resolution, if they so see that. I just think that would be an important element to the resolution, not to the letter, but to the resolution itself.
So where do you want to put it?
I'll leave that up to the people that'd like to write.
Yeah, he's good at that. Okay, that's a good point there, Mr. Durman. Yes?
If any, this is a suggestion, if with this, should we wait until Thursday night to vote on the resolution? Consider, you know, voting on it on Thursday instead of tonight. That way, if any amendments can, or changes can be done, we would have time to look further into it. Some input on it.
Ms. Mullitt?
Yeah. That's a good point.
If we could probably have five minutes, I bet some of us maybe could add that, and we could indeed vote tonight.
I mean...
I should be... Pardon?
Right, well, I think we're basically adding, you know, each sentence to include the value.
If the board approves of everything else but just adding that one component, I...
Okay. Mr. Bettencourt, you want a comment?
Yeah, the first thing is, someone mentioned maybe Mr. Roma would change his mind. It's my understanding if they get six board members to request a meeting, so we don't have to necessarily have Chaz Roma change his mind, as long as we get two other, maybe Mr. Garvey, who represents District 1, and one other Bessie board member, and then that would solve that problem. The other thing, I agree to, go ahead, if we're gonna do it, let's get it worded and send it tonight, and don't send it just regular mail. Don't we normally send that specialty or whatever? Get it there quick, or I'll drive it up there if y'all want me to.
That's the best idea yet.
By the express?
Okay.
Yes, I think we could probably work on just getting that sentence included with the teaching and... Ms. Bellisario.
Ms. Mullitt, Mr. Alfred, and I have a suggestion here, a combined suggestion. After the last whereas, just add "and teacher evaluations." And then after the "therefore be it resolved," add "and teacher evaluations." I think Caddo Parish, this came from Caddo Parish, I think they left it out because I think the teachers are exempt this year, aren't they? It doesn't affect them this year, and they were looking at this year affecting the school performance score in the letter grade. I think that's why they...
Right.
But I think it could easily be added.
Okay. Okay, you want to repeat that for us, somebody, so we can make sure we get in the right spot?
The paragraph, the last whereas paragraph.
Okay.
Just add at the end where you've got a semicolon, I would take that off and put "or teacher evaluations," or "and teacher evaluation."
And.
However you want to put that.
Teacher evaluation.
And then you have to do the same thing after the paragraph beginning with "therefore."
So at the end of our district's performance score?
District's performance score, and...
Do you want "and/or"? I think "and..." I'm sorry.
I believe that "and" is a stronger word, and instead of "and/or," that gives them a choice.
Mr. Durman.
I don't have a problem with that. Like I said, I just leave that up to people that like to write this stuff, so...
You pass that along very well, thank you. Mr. Bettencourt.
All right, we're talking about PARC, so this is germane to the agenda item. Hypothetical, I'd like a little conversation or some feedback. What if we opt... What if we opted out as a district? Because this is a fiasco, and perhaps some high-performing, other high-performing districts would have followed suit, and it became a groundswell or something. Just some thoughts, because this whole thing is ridiculous.
Anybody want to comment on that? Mr. Durham.
Well, I don't like to write, but apparently I like to talk, so, anyway. Ron, I understand your frustration, and I think we all share that. The problem is, is that our funding is 50% basically from the state, which, you know, they control. And I think if we look at abandoning the state on these issues, and also, I just don't, I can't see how that's going to be productive at all. I just think it's going to be detrimental to our school system, our employees, our students, and everybody else. And, you know, I think we have to follow the channels that, that we currently have. As much as I dislike the Bessie action and that of Department of Ed, I think we, we have to fight it through the channels that are given us. And I don't know that if we have the authority not to do this at this particular point in time. I would defer that either to Mr. Fols or legal counsel or somebody to advise us of those issues, and I think it's a very delicate conversation that we would have with this, so I'm not sure.
Okay. Ms. Balsario.
I would suggest that perhaps that should be an agenda item for Thursday night after we've had a chance to look into it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Bencourt.
Thanks for your input, Mr. Durham. I'm aware of all that, and like I said, it's a hypothetical. In a recent, what you call that, Facebook, Facehead thing, Lottie Beebe had almost, if you read it one time quickly, she calls for school systems to opt out. As you know, she's the superintendent of Saint Martin Parish, and as well as a sitting Bessie member. If you read it more precisely, she's not actually calling, it's a what-if or a possibility that she says in her, in her posting. And I just was wondering, you know, what would Johnny do if nine or 10 high-performing school systems across this state all decided to say, you know what, you, this is a fiasco for our students, and we're putting our foot down, and we're not going to, we're not going to play anymore? And I just wanted to hear some, some feedback, even from Mr. Fols. I know all the ramifications. If one school system did it, it could rain down on us. But if it was a movement, since we are a leader, it's just an interesting proposition in my mind, which it's been a lot of times is maybe twisted. I just wanted some other, some feedback. A couple of board members in, you know, just chatting, kind of agreed that it would be good to do, but I'm not necessarily, necessarily saying we should do it. I just wanted to hear some thoughts, because this whole thing, I think we can all agree, this is a fiasco what they're pulling off. It's changes by the hour. It's not park. It's, it's, it's just crazy. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Womack?
What are they going to rain down on us? I mean, I think it's a bold endeavor, and I think he has a good idea. I mean, we were the first board in the state to put a resolution together to opt out a common core, you know? Nothing rained down on us then, what's going to rain down on us now. I think he's held, owned to something. And I, I think a lot of the time, as Saint Tammany goes, so goes the rest of the state. This is a board that's respected throughout the state. I think he has a good idea, and he's owned to something.
All right. So thank you. Ms. Mullet?
Okay, I think I have this resolution. Okay, if we, if we go down to the last whereas, okay? It reads, "Whereas Saint Tammany Parish School Board members hereby request, request that Bessie call a special meeting to either one, call a moratorium on all school districts participating in park testing, or advise districts that any parents who receive a waiver from the State Department or a school district allowing their child not to participate in park testing, also be exempt from including that child in the calculation of the school and, take out "or," the district's performance score and teacher evaluation scores."
Okay.
Okay? Not "and/or," "and." Okay, then you go down to the next paragraph, which is, you know, "Therefore be it resolved that the members of Saint Tammany Parish School Board do hereby request that Bessie hold a special meeting and one, approve a man, manatorium, moratorium on all school districts participating in park testing, or two, advise districts that any parents who receive a waiver from the Department of State Department or a school district allowing their child not to participate in park testing, also be exempt from including that child in the calculation of the school and district's performance score and teachers' evaluation scores."
All right. Thank you very much.
How does that sound?
Any other comments? Ms. Seale?
We really don't know if is, if this is park testing. This is a big question here. So is there some sort of language we could put in there that would adjust that somewhat? Because we don't have the, it has not been exposed what test it really is. We're calling it park, but that's my big question, my big concern. If we're going to address it, maybe we should add some, some language in there that will also address whatever is suggested at this point.
I thought John White called it park testing. Well, that was at one time, and I thought his latest was, he used to work park. I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Mullet.
Sorry. Then my, I guess I would refer to Dr. Sanford in asking if that would be, it would, would it be correct to put everywhere that the resolution says park test, put park test or park-like test? Would that...
Designated park test.
If we're talking about grades three through eight, the booklet that we have received as a testing manual has park on the front of it.
That's what I heard.
That's a good point.
Can we, would it be proper to say any version of park?
Or specify the grade level of the standardized test?
I'd hate to get so specific on that.
What about state identified? I mean, the states, state designated, I mean, they're, they're the ones that are using the term, or park-like, either one. But I mean, if you said what the state is calling it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Just put whatever it is.
Standardized testing. Standardized testing.
Okay. I, I would really like to keep park. I'm sorry.
We're still keeping that, but we're adding all two.
Instead of park-like, we're putting standardized testing?
How about state designated park test?
I would like to add that we also will be administering the LEAP test for Science and Social Studies. The EOC test for high school.
Yes.
And the ACT also for high school. So unless you designate each one individually...
Let's don't do that.
That's right. You're making it, covering others we're not talking about.
But I don't know the, the direction of the board, but we do administer many different types of standardized testing.
Yeah, that's right. Can't do that.
You know, I understand your concerns, Ms. Seale, but I feel confident that if we just leave it as park testing, that they know exactly what we mean.
Right. I believe they know what we're talking about.
I mean, and it's not like we're putting something in law. Do you know what I'm saying? They know what we mean. That's just my, that's just my personal opinion.
Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. I agree with Ms. Mullet. I think they understand what we mean, but I also understand that they may use that as a way to wiggle. And I mean, when, like Mr. Fols says, state identified test, then that basically covers for, you know, if you say state identified test for grade level, then that pretty much, you put park in that, then wouldn't, wouldn't we cover everything that we're having to use at this particular moment? Mr. Fols, I'm going to direct that to you.
Go ahead, Ms. Balsario.
I have a lot of thoughts right now, but I'm thinking that we don't want to muddy the waters, to use John White's favorite expression. And I think we should mention park, because that's what the public knows. That's what parents know. It's what our teachers and administrators know. I like Mr. Fols's state designated park test, because that will cover it if John White suddenly starts calling it some other kind of park right now.
Right.
And I think that was a really good idea. I would suggest that.
Yeah. State designated park, does that sound better?
I think that...
Ms. Seale?
I agree with Ms. Balsario on that, and Mr. Fols's suggestion is something I'm definitely for, because we do have to address that, that, that other possibility that is out there. Whether, whether it's law or not, we still have to address it in a resolution, that we are, we also know that there is something out there that is stipulated as park, and it really isn't.
Besides?
I'd, I'd just like to offer this suggestion, that tonight, we accept the letter and have it sent in the mail, and then on Thursday, we come back with our cleaned up, well, it's not a full board meeting, is it? It's a committee meeting, I'm sorry. Well, my thought was that we, on Thursday, but it's not, well, we could even wait till our, our board meeting, have a cleaned up resolution that is like we normally do our resolutions, it's read at the meeting, and then voted on. I, I just think that's a cleaner process to be, you know, it's my suggestion. The letter is, is ready to go, it's personal, it starts, it says what it said, because some of the wording in this resolution does kind of bother me, and I, I'd like to see it cleaned up a little bit more and sent out at the full board meeting, but that's my suggestion.
Ms. Seale?
At this time, I would like to move, with my original suggestion was to wait until Thursday, I move that we address this on Thursday and have it ready to go.
But we have a motion to accept both of these right now.
Right.
So we have to rescind something? We need to vote on it? We need to vote?
Yeah, we need to vote on it if, if we're going. Any more comments before we vote? Ms. Balsario.
Since this whole situation changes daily, I don't see any reason for waiting. I think it looks pretty clean. We've made two changes, put them in, and at the discretion of the board, let's see who wants to wait till Thursday, who wants to send it.
Do you know the original motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Harold.
So he, if it's going to come out, Mr. Harold, we'll have to be the one to... The motion on the floor is to do both.
Do both.
I would certainly accept a friendly amendment to bifurcate motion. I've been wanting to say that for four, 14 years.
Anybody want to change it with amendment or something on there? To do what Mr. Charles just said?
He wants to bifurcate. He wants to separate.
Somebody else has to make that motion.
That's seconded your move.
No, no, but to separate it, you need to...
I don't want no bifurcation going on around here.
Okay. Anybody going to make that motion to separate the two?
I know.
I'll move that. It's a friendly amendment, we vote out each of these separately.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a second to that motion and to vote on them separately with a second. All right, any comments by the board before we do that? Ms. Balsario.
Considering that next Thursday night is just a committee meeting, it would still have to lay over yet another week, right? And at which time, it would probably be pointless. I agree, we could bifurcate it. Love your word. But I, I think that time is of the essence. I would just like board members to consider that.
Right. I believe time is of the essence also. Yes, sir, Ms. Nation?
Thank you, Mr. Luke. Just a question, I mean, if we approve to bifurcate, all we're doing is separating them for tonight's meeting, correct?
Yes.
And we're not moving any in time, just, we're voting on each separately for tonight, so we would still go forward tonight.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
Ms. Womack?
I just want to say, I know that Mr. Charles' word is a real word, because I had a bifurcation with heart surgery.
Oh.
So it's a real word.
Okay, any other comments before we vote? Comments from the public? Yes, ma'am?
Couple of comments, but it's not possible to really have good public input, because I don't know what your, either one of those says. So I would ask you to read those for the public record, both of them, but just quickly, as far as the state funding, the research that I've done and, and input that I've gotten from others and from other states, and I know we're a little different with our laws, but I don't believe that it would be constitutionally legal for the state to withhold funding from students. It's not you he's withholding it from. It's not people that object to his policy, but, and there are other reasons why I think it would be illegal for him to do that, and he certainly has broken so many laws. Fine, you sue me, I'll sue you. This was an emergency, as far as doing this quickly, this was an emergency meeting. You added emergency agenda item. This is an emergency to thousands of parents across the state, who, trust me, I've been to three parishes so far, I'm going to two more this weekend. Our series are opting out all over the place. Representative Henskins has written a bill that he said he was going to release last Friday, but for one reason or other, he hasn't. It would be great if he jumped right in there with his bill that he's introducing that relates directly to this. This ball needs to rapidly roll down this hill, so I hope that you do go ahead and send this as quickly as possible. But if you would read those, that would be great. Thanks.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and read the letter, they had to put it in, in the record.
So what's on the floor right now, just so we make sure everybody's clear? What's on the floor right now?
To vote to separate the two.
We have separated them. Separate the two. Is there a motion on either one yet, or not? Okay. Why don't y'all vote to separate, and then we'll read it and let you vote on each one individually?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to take the vote to separate the, the two. All right. All those in favor of separating the two, please raise your hand. Raise them up.
Unanimous.
Okay.
Now you need a motion for the letter.
Okay. I can go ahead and read it now?
I'd get a motion first.
All right, motion there to do the letter.
Move.
Okay. Ms. Nation, second, who was second? I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Harold. Okay.
Is there another motion?
This is a motion on the letter.
Yeah, a motion that we're going to vote to send the, the letter to Bessie.
You're going to read it?
I'm going to read it, and then we're going to discuss, yes. Dear Bessie member, it has come to our attention that you are considering the possibility of a special Bessie meeting to discuss park testing...
opting out movement will have on our schools and school districts. We know that opting out of park testing would have multi-layered negative consequences to our school systems. It is responsibility of Bessie to develop protocols consistent across the state of Louisiana. Discussion of the placing of a moratorium, of the assignment of letter grades for schools and school districts should be placed on the agenda of the special meeting. Please call a special meeting of Bessie for this discussion, as this issue needs to be resolved for education stakeholders. All right, we're gonna vote on sending this letter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Unanimous again. Oh, any discussions from the public?
Yeah, I think we need to have that before we vote. That's what I was fixing to say.
I was trying to keep Lee sitting down. Okay, and Ms. Mullitt?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this resolution with, with the changes, and I can read them or Ms. Belisario.
Robin, we haven't voted on the letter yet.
Oh, I thought we voted.
No, I'm sorry. I jumped the gun a little bit. Hey, all right, no comment for that? Okay. All right. All right, so we have no comment for the public, so let's go ahead and vote on the letter to go to Bessie. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Druck.
I just wanna make sure that we comply with, with sending a letter to each one of the Bessie board members separately as well.
Yes, that's what we'll do.
So, I just wanna make sure that we know that we are going to do that as well.
Absolutely, yes. It goes to each one separately, yes.
Board members, if it could, I have the original with me tonight, so before you leave, if you would see me and sign it, and then we'll scan it, and we'll start emailing them. We'll email them all and then we'll follow up with a hard copy in the mail. But I think it's important to get an email to their, to their email address tomorrow morning.
Yes, sir. Great. Thank you, Mr. Foles.
We will do that, won't we?
Okay, now we're getting ready to do the resolution. Ms. Mullitt?
I would like to make a motion that we accept this resolution tonight with some minor changes. And if, Ms. Belisario, would you read those changes?
Ms. Mullitt, I think we need to read the entire resolution first and then, and then come back with.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm sorry. Oh, and come back with changes. Okay. Can I just?
Read it with the changes for me, please.
Who? Me?
Uh, it, I don't know, I don't, I don't know. I don't have it exact written down, dear.
Do you have the changes?
It doesn't.
Okay. Whereas St. Tammany Parish School Board previously submitted a resolution dated November 13th, 2014, requesting that Bessie and the state of Louisiana remove its agreement with the Common Core standards and the park testing for all students in the state. And whereas St. Tammany Parish School Board has advised that there are grow, has been advised that there is a growing movement by parents throughout the state opting their children out of, out of participating in the state-designated park testing this year. Whereas the St. Tammany Parish School Board has been advised that this Department of Education has condoned the practice of parents opting their students out of participating in the state-designated park testing, but has advised, but has advised that the school districts will be held accountable for every student not taking the state-designated park test by assigning a zero for every student that does not take the test. Whereas allowing students to, whereas allowing students to not take the test with no consequences, but assigning a zero grade to each student that does not take the test will have dire consequences on the school district's performance scores and school letter grades and teachers' evaluation scores. Whereas St. Tammany Parish School Board members hereby request that Bessie call a special meeting to either one, call for a moratorium on all school districts participating in the state-designated park testing, or advise districts that any parents who receive a waiver from the department, State Department, or a school district allowing their child not to participate in the state-designated park testing, also be exempt from including that child in the calculation of the school and district's performance scores and teacher evaluation scores. Therefore, be it resolved that the members of St. Tammany Parish School Board do hereby request that Bessie hold a special meeting and one, approve a moratorium on all school districts participating in the design, the state-designated park testing, or advise districts that any parents who receive a waiver from the State Department or a school district allowing their child not to participate in state-designated park testing, also be exempt from including that child in the calculation of the schools, school and district's performance scores and teacher evaluation score. Be it further resolved, that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of the board, with copies being sent to Governor Bobby Jindal, State Department of Education John White, members of Louisiana Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, all members of Louisiana Legislature, the President, and the Superintendent of every Louisiana School Board, the Executive Director of the Louisiana School Board Association, and all public education stakeholders, organizations, associations.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so we're voting now to send this resolution tomorrow or hold off on it till February the 12th? All those in favor of, no?
That's not the motions.
We have to have public discussion and if, and I think would, are we, and I'm not really clear what, what we're voting, would, will be voting on, 'cause are we saying that we're gonna approve the resolution as written or modified now, and then that it's gonna either be sent tomorrow or whenever it can be typed or whatever, or we're gonna lay over to the next board meeting? Is that, so?
Well, what's the intent of the motion?
My motion was.
That it be accepted tonight?
Tonight with the changes that I just read.
Identified.
And we send it out, just like we do every other resolution that we approve.
I second that motion.
Okay. All right.
And Ms. Nation, second that. Karen, if you didn't get it. All right, any comments by the board? Yeah, no.
Did you hear the second on that?
Okay, no question, okay. Any comments from the public? Ms. Barrios?
It's for public consumption, because you all probably know this, but this, this assigning a zero for students that opt out to the school performance score. The, the calculation for school performance score assigns a zero to any student that scores unacceptable, no matter what the point range is. They also assign a zero to any score, to any student that scores in approaching basic. The whole thing is ludicrous.
Right.
So, they need to get rid of the whole thing. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Okay. So, now we're voting on the motion from Ms. Mullitt.
Resolution.
Resolution. All those in favor of a motion for the resolution, raise your hand. Unanimous? Unanimous.
No bifurcation.
No bifurcation. All right, unanimous. Very good. Ms. Balsareau?
I'm just curious, does this get sent to the media as well? Do you usually do that?
Yes, ma'am, we will. And we, you know, normally it's part of the record of the meeting, but we'll go ahead and make sure it gets out as well. And I thought I'd send one to Mr. Richard through LSBA tonight, so he's aware.
Okay, fantastic. All right, that's it on our agenda for tonight. Thank you all for coming and being very attentive. Meeting adjourned.